Is there anything I should know?
It's just the light.
Good evening, I'd like to call to order the regular business. Thank you. First, may I have a motion to adjourn the private session?
We have an agenda meeting.
The agenda meeting.
I'll move that.
Second. Roll call. Well, just to make it easier. Is all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
Point of order, I'm not sure what we're voting on. Any of the adjourned session or any of the adjourned meeting?
We're voting to adjourn the agenda meeting.
To adjourn the agenda meeting.
Aye.
And coming back into public session.
Aye.
No, I'm sorry, maybe we should start that all over, just to clarify. Now, I apologize. So, do I have a motion to adjourn the agenda meeting and to return to the regular meeting?
I'll move that.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? None opposed, motion carries. And now, let me call to order the regular meeting of the January 20th, 2015 Board of Education. Adequate notice of the meeting was forwarded to the Esberry Park Press and the Beacon on January 7th, 2015 by posting the notice in the Forkett River Post Office and the Lenoka Harbor Post Office and by filing a copy of the notice with the Lacey Township Clerk as required by the public meeting, the Open Public Meeting Act. Please rise to salute the flag.
My congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which stands our nation under God, invisible with the reading of the law.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to direct your attention to agenda items on 261. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the agenda and regular meeting held on December 15th, 2014?
Move.
Second. Roll call.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Abstain, I was not here.
I'm sorry, I want out of order. Yeah, no. Mr. Bidwell.
Abstain.
Mrs. DeSanza.
Abstain.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mrs. Dorell.
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the private session held on December 15th, 2014?
Move. Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Abstain.
Mrs. DeSanza.
Abstain.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Abstain.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mrs. Dorell.
Yes.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the reorganization meeting on January 5th, 2015?
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSanza.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Abstain.
Mrs. Dorell.
Yes. Thank you. Now directing your attention to page 279. May I have a motion to approve payment of the bills totaling $7,188,491.38?
Move.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSanza.
Yes, with no on six items. Page 263, item 950374. Page 264, item 508575. Page 265, item 951794. Page 266, item 516775. Page 268, item 950006. And page 277, item 58275, and I'll be passing down the list.
You'll be providing me a list?
It's coming for us.
Thank you. Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes, I'm abstaining on the total for the Verizon Wireless bill. I would like to do more fact-finding on that. Thank you.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mrs. Dorell.
Yes.
May I have a motion through the adoption of the resolution?
Move.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSanza.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubager.
Yes.
Mrs. Dorell.
Yes.
Mr. Stein, do you have anything further to report? Or anything to report, I should say?
Nothing further at this point. No way at all.
Thank you. And our student representatives. Good to see you tonight. Who would like to start?
I will.
Thank you, Paul.
Hi, I'm Bailey Dixon, and I'm the senior class treasurer, filling in for Paul, who will not be here tonight. Right now, the senior classes' sweatshirt fundraisers are going on. Seniors who ordered the sweatshirts already will be receiving them soon. And we are also doing a raffle for an iPad and Beats headphones, and we will begin selling tickets soon. We have been planning prom, and we have already chose memory books, invitations, and crowns. Finally, we are in the process of setting up an event on February 12th to support congenital heart defect week. Everyone will wear red in support of a student of Central Regional Carly Fetter, who has a life-threatening defect. Thank you.
Thank you, and I'm sorry, Bailey. I didn't look before I spoke. I apologize. Thank you for coming.
On January 24th, we have the PTSI Daddy Daughter Dance, so we'll have students volunteering there to help set up. In February, on the 26th, is our Lacey's Got Talent, so students will show their talents for a talent show. And we're doing a thing where the highest class percentage that shows up at the talent show will get a pizza party for that. On February 5th is eighth grade orientation, where all the electives and clubs will showcase what they're about, and we will have officers volunteering there. On the 25th is the prom fashion show, so seniors will model dresses and tuxedos from local businesses. And our next SGA meeting is February 11th at 6:30. Gabrielle Toby is January's Unsung Hero Award recipient. Gabrielle goes above and beyond in all the activities she partakes in. She is exceptionally considerate, sensitive, and outgoing. In the classroom, Gabrielle always does her best. During class, she demonstrates her ability to be a positive role model, a leader, and a team player by always offering her assistance to other students who struggle with the material. Within the school community, Gabrielle is an active member in student government and the interact club. She participates in varsity cheer throughout the football and co-ed seasons, during which she acts as a mentor for the younger cheerleaders. The positive attitude and hard work Gabrielle puts into everything that she does inside and outside the classroom is the reason why she has been selected as the unsung hero for the month of January. She's with her family, too. If you guys want to stand up.
Thank you very much. Dr. Brower, do you have a report for us?
Thank you, thank you, President Dorell. As you know, we'd like to start off our evening by continuing the celebration of our students here tonight. So, I will introduce Mr. Hanshaw, principal of Lacey High School, and he has some very important information to share with us first.
All right, thank you, Dr. Brower. It's always a great privilege and pleasure to introduce our Students of the Month on our Student Spotlight. If I'd invite the board to join us over here so you can view our presentation. Our first Senior of the Month, I'd like to introduce to you Hannah Lemke. Come on down. If you have a student with her family, if you would just raise your hands, we can give you a round of applause. And if we could roll our tape.
Hello, I'm Mr. Hanshaw. Welcome to Senior Spotlight January, where we meet our outstanding Seniors of the Month. Joining me now is Hannah Lemke. Hannah ranked in the top 10 percent of her class and is a natural leader who has been a delegate from Lacey to the Women's Career Institute, the U. O'Brien Leadership Conference, and the Leadership Training Conference, and the Governor's School of Science. Hannah, can you share with us what you've learned from these experiences?
From his experiences, a big thing I took away was the leadership skills like collaboration and ingenuity and finding ways to get everybody involved in whatever activity is happening.
I'm sure you represent Lacey very well at these conferences. Can you tell us about your involvement in extracurricular activities here at Lacey?
Okay, extracurriculars. I've been in marching band and concert band for four years, as well as drama club. And I've had involvement in international clubs, business clubs, and I'm student government vice president.
So, you're staying very busy here, and we've enjoyed watching you in these performances. What do you like to do outside of school?
Outside of school, usually studying or practicing for my various extracurriculars, but I also do region band, which is a state audition band. And it's a collection of students in a company that performs together at various colleges.
That's very good. And here's a toughest question, your future plans?
My future plans? I will be attending some four-year college that I haven't decided, and I will be attending undecided, because that is undecided.
Well, it'll all come together, believe me. You're gonna be doing great at whatever you choose to do. Congratulations, Hannah, on your selection of Senior of the Month.
Thank you.
We'll be right back with John Rice.
Hannah, on behalf of the Lacey Township Board of Education, we're very proud of you, and congratulations.
All right, as promised, our next Student of the Month, John Rice. John, please come on down. And while John's making his way over here, if we could have his family, please raise your hands over there. A round of applause, please. I'm delighted with you.
Welcome back to Senior Spotlight January. Now joining us is Senior of the Month, John Rice. John has a 4.2 GPA and has been president of the Emergency Service Club for three years. John is also one of our captains of the track team. Can you tell us, John, a little bit about your involvement in school activities?
Yes, so I've been involved in record sprint track for the last four years. I have done emergency service club also the last four years and became president three years ago. I'm also in National Honor Society. I'm a true and true person for the society.
So, you're staying quite busy in school. I'll let you know, I was a track guy, too. You could look like this someday. Something to call it. I do volunteer with First Aid Squad, which is a 14-year degree, which you can tell us about. I love the community service.
So, I love to volunteer with First Aid Squad. I've been there since I was 14, and last year I just became sergeant by listening to, and I now answer 911 first aid calls. I just enjoy seeing how I can help people and make a difference at the end of the day.
Oh, sure. Please, a little bit of a safer place and a better place, because you're involved. What do you like to do outside of school and other community services, anything?
Outside of school, I do a lot of, I spend a lot of my time with first aid, if it's working on first aid ambulance or fundraisers. I also work with Special Olympics. Coming up in February, we're going to be going to mount our Special Olympics game. Also, family is very important, so I spend a lot of time with family.
They're all great, that's awesome. Your future plans, what are you looking to do in the future?
I'm looking to become a nurse. I don't know what school yet. I've been accepted into multiple colleges, and it's just a matter of deciding when.
All right, it'll come together very soon, I guarantee that. Congratulations, John, for selection of Senior of the Month. That's gonna wrap up Senior Spotlight January. We'll see you next month.
John, on behalf of the Board of Education, thank you very much, not only for your contribution in the community, but your amazing standards at school. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Brower, for this opportunity. Thank you, Board, for allowing us to share our Students of the Month. Thank you.
It's hard to decide what I enjoy more, watching the students receive their awards, watching the board members enjoy the looks on their faces, or watching your parents and families celebrate. So, I get to see that through all of your eyes, so thank you. Thank you, Mr. Hanshaw. So, before I begin my superintendent's remarks, I just wanted to let everyone know, and so excited to see you all here today, that January is School Board Recognition Month. And if you were here last month or had an opportunity to see us, you know that we honored four board members who served many years with plaques and recognition. And tonight, although we don't have any plaques, I do want to recognize for you, our community, the work that happens as a school board member here in Lacey. These school board members dedicate extraordinary hours volunteering their service, their dedication, and their work, I know, is as challenging as it is rewarding. So, on behalf of the students and staff here in Lacey Township, we want to thank you for everything that you do. So, I wanted to start off with that today in my remarks. I also thought I'd take a theme tonight, because as you know, the superintendent's report is available to you and online. And I thought today I would just talk a little bit about the songs and the celebrations that occurred in our schools in December and continue on into January. We had creative renditions of the Polar Express at Forkett River School, two holiday sing-alongs. Our Cedar Creek students, the Creakers, went over to visit Spring Oaks Assisted Living Center to sing for the residents there. Lenoka Harbor had their first-grade sing-along along with the third-grade chorus, who put on a wonderful production of "The Night Before Christmas." And Milpon continued with chorus and instrumental performances as well. Lots of singing over at the middle school, and if you had an opportunity to stop by the middle school or if you work at the middle school, I continued to be in awe with their door decorating contest. It was absolutely awesome. We had over 100 students at the high school participating in their production for "The Night Before Christmas." So, I want to take today's comments to thank the band and the music teachers that are here tonight, who are watching us at home and who come to work every day, sharing their talents and their passion of music with our students and our community and the community at large. So, I thank you for that. In other news, I hope that you'll have a chance to read about Mrs. DeWitt over at the middle school, who was recognized as a teacher rocks at WJRZ, I believe. And I want to congratulate again all the Students of the Month, those highlighted here tonight, but also those in our reports. I also want to mention to you that on Wednesday, February 11th, I hope that you'll take some time to mark your calendars and join us here at the high school, where we will be working together with the task force, Lacey Township Police Department, the municipal alliance, on our program raising and educating a drug-free community, or we call "Wed Night Out." We'll be offering students an opportunity for free homework passes and extra credit, but really, what we want to do is have our parents come out that night. It is extremely important to us to share the information with you, and what I do want to share is, the presentation will not only be done by Steve Willis, but also our chief, Dave LaFroda, and the focus is going to be your child and the internet, if you will, renew. And the concept is to share information with our parents about the relationship between what's happening on the internet and how drugs are getting into our community and into homes. So, I hope that you'll please mark that night, and I hope that you'll be here to hear the presentation. So, that is the 11th of February, that's a Wednesday night, 7 o'clock here. I want to go back to the high school for a moment and congratulate all of the inductees for the National Honor Society. The night was a beautiful night, and I want to thank everyone for the work that they did on part of the staff, but also for our families and our students to celebrate such a beautiful accomplishment. I also want to mention that this week and next, we have lots of musical celebrations as well. So, I hope that I'll see you on Thursday night, Forkett River's Winter Band Concert on the 22nd, our middle school concert on the 26th, Lenoka Harbor's concert is on the 28th, and Cedar Creek has one on the 29th. And I think that that might include everything for the upcoming events for the next two weeks. So, I hope that you see us there, and again, I thank all of our teachers who are sharing such beautiful music with our students. At this point, I want to ask Dr. Clark to share a few items that I know that she has to present to you tonight. So, I'll turn my report over now to Dr. Clark.
Thank you, Dr. Brower. I have four items, topics that I want to talk about tonight. The first one is the school and district harassment, intimidation, and bullying grades report that the district is required to report in a public session. So, the past three years, the Lacey Township School District has implemented the Harassment, Intimidation, and Bullying Rights Act, called the ABR. And the reason we do that is to foster a safe and positive learning environment for all of our students, especially as it relates to harassment, intimidation, bullying, which we call HIBR. So, beginning with the 2011-12 school year, our school district has conscientiously implemented the ABR in terms of reporting, investigating, and completing all of the necessary paperwork that's required by the state. But in addition to that, we are very conscientious about implementing programs for our students, and that's K through 12. So, during the first three years of implementation of the ABR, we have made progress in addressing and improving our standards that are in line with the ABR. So, let me talk a little bit about the school and district HIBRades. The New Jersey Department of Education asked that all school districts conduct what's called a self-assessment. And at the end of the 13-14 school year, in order to be able to evaluate and report it during the 14-15 school year, which is what we are doing, each of the principals and their specific team conducted this self-assessment that's based on eight core elements and 26 indicators. The maximum amount of points that a school can earn is 78. So, when I report the scores to you, it's a score of 78. And then, the district gets a score, which is the average of all six of our schools. So, Lacey Township High School, on their self-evaluations, scored a 65 of 78. Lacey Township Middle School scored a 64 of 78. Milpon, 69 of 78. Lenoka Harbor, 73 of 78. Forkett River School, 71. And Cedar Creek School, 74 of 78. So, the district's average was a 69. So, when we look at these self-assessments, we can say that we've met all of the requirements of the ABR. But in this process, we also identify some areas that need to strengthen. And so, during the upcoming school year, our school district will be working toward improving training for staff and looking at all of our HIBR programs, looking at our approaches, and some of the initiatives that we implemented. Maybe we find that some are really strong and some others, and we'll seek to make adjustments as we go. But that is the purpose of the grade report, and I also wanted to let you know that if anybody wants to see the grade report, it is posted on the district website under latest news, and it's also posted on each of the school's websites under latest news as well. So, I wanted to let you know about that. The second thing I wanted to talk about is actually really, really great news, and this is great news on behalf of Milpon School. Several months ago, media specialist Jerry Lynn Van Zant wrote a grant, and the grant was through the Ocean First Foundation. And I have to say, the Ocean First Foundation has been very generous with the Lacey Township School District. Unfortunately, the grant was not chosen as a winner through the Ocean First Foundation, but it did get a lot of attention from the Win Trove Family Foundation. And Lisa Win Trove approached Jerry Lynn and asked her if she would come in and do a presentation of the grant, what it was, why it was, how it was. And Jerry Lynn was kind enough to go in and meet with Ms. Win Trove. And coincidentally, several other grant writers, who were not recipients of the Ocean First Foundation grant, were asked to do the same. On December 1st, Jerry Lynn was informed that the Win Trove Family Foundation will sponsor the grant, and they submitted a check in the amount of $8,955.83. So needless to say, Jerry Lynn, Principal Copac, Supervisor Dougherty, and the entire music department were ecstatic. And of course, the Lacey Township School District extends a tremendous thank you to the Win Trove Foundation and to Lisa Win Trove for making that opportunity possible. So let me tell you a little bit about what the grant is. And Jerry Lynn was kind enough to do a little outline, so I can read it to you. The project, again, or I may not have mentioned it, is called Perfect Harmony: Incorporating Interactive Technology Into the Modern Music Classroom. It's a project that will engage all 700 students at Milpon in a unique and innovative way. Milpon School will incorporate the academic fundamentals known as STEAM, which stands for Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Math, by integrating these subject areas into the music curriculum. So it sounds really very interesting. The mission of the program at Milpon School is to introduce new music technology to all students. And the goal for the model music classroom is to expand the learning experiences for all Milpon students. Students will be actively engaged in interactive and hands-on activities while still learning critical music concepts. And most importantly, the connection that it has to career and college readiness is that hopefully it will prepare students for careers in the music industry. And some of the examples are acoustical, engineering, and music technology. So congratulations to the music department at Milpon. Congratulations to Jerry Lynn for all of her hard work. And I, even though Jerry Lynn's not here, I know that there were several music teachers from Milpon here. So a round of applause to them for coming. Okay, the next thing I want to talk about is actually an invitation. I'd like to inform and invite our parents to our upcoming Common Core Park Parent Night. It's scheduled for Wednesday, February 18th, at 6:30 p.m. We don't have a room location yet, but when we send out our automated information and our text messages, we'll include where it's going to be in Lacey High School, and we'll also include that information on our website. So if you recall, Dr. Brower and I mentioned this night during the State of the Schools' Academic Achievement Report, that was this past October. And we mentioned that we were going to have this parent night, because that night in October, we certainly couldn't discuss all of the intricacies of the park and the Common Core, but we plan to do that on February 18th. So we invite you to come out. We also wanted to let you know that a gentleman by the name of Ray Penny from the New Jersey School Boards Association will also join us that evening. And he's going to provide an overview of the origin of the Common Core standards and how they are used in schools today. So there'll be an opportunity for parents to ask questions. And so we really encourage too many parents to come out and join us. Again, automated information will go out, and we'll post that information on our website. And finally, last month during December's board meeting, a few parents expressed some concerns about blended learning. This is the blended learning initiative that is taking place at the high school. So I wanted to let our parents know that your concerns were heard, and we are currently working on an evaluative process. It's going to be a three-phased feedback loop that is going to start with a student survey. That's going to be followed by a parent survey, and then that's, I'm sorry, it's going to be followed by a teacher survey, and then a parent survey. And the information that we're, hopefully, want to collect from the surveys is going to be compiled and added to the information that we've already received. And we've received a lot. We received some information at our board meeting in December, as I mentioned. We've also received some communications from other parents. So all of that information is going to be compiled. We're going to analyze it. And the information is certainly going to inform us on what's working well, what perhaps is not working well, what are the strengths of the program, what are the weaknesses, and certainly what we can do to improve it. So this evaluative process is part of any process that we would deploy for a new program. So it is a new program, and we have a responsibility to take a look at, you know, what's working. So I wanted to let you know that. But in the meantime, while we're conducting this three-phased feedback loop, I encourage anybody that has questions to reach out to myself, Principal Henshaw. We would be more than happy to address specific concerns, answer any questions, and certainly once we have all of the data, we, of course, will in turn share what we have found. So I appreciate those of you that have come out and made your comments and expressed your concerns. We really appreciate it. It's certainly going to help us improve what we're already doing. So that concludes my comments. Thank you, Dr. Brower.
Thank you.
And Principal, President.
I would like to be principal. Sounds like Mr. Henshaw has a lot of fun. Dr. Brower, do you have anything further?
I don't think I do have a question.
Thank you. At this moment, can we take a break so we can allow all the students to go home and study? Midterms are coming up, right? So let's take a break. So all those who would like to leave, can leave? Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations.
How's Maggie doing?
Have a good night.
Good to see you.
Wait, we need to wait. We want to put it on camera. Don't fall away. Sit back down.
This is awesome. We didn't need, we don't want you to leave.
We don't want you to leave. We're so excited.
Come here. I knew there was a team here. I didn't want to.
That's nice. I like the dress.
We don't want to talk. Just around the end. Say anything. Just put it on camera. We're the coaches. We are our coaches.
We have Coach Patterson. We have Coach Gann.
I know it's not a order of, maybe you might have to come back up. Do we want your thing?
Wow.
Yeah. Okay, you guys can stay here.
Thank you. This is going to go right on my car.
You don't have to come back down. Come back down. We'll just start it real quick.
Is this going to fly on the rain? Is what happened?
Ground, see?
Yeah.
As a record, how'd they do?
I would, I believe Dr. Brower had a few more comments to make. So, yeah, yeah, I will stand. So guys, we are so excited that you are here. In fact, Vice President Schubinger and I were talking. We say we see you in the back, but we didn't exactly know, we couldn't see who you were. We are so excited that you are here. And I know for this board and for this school community, the fact that you guys took the initiative to not only help this board understand your passion, but you guys took it and you ran with it. I can't wait to see you on ice. I know that all of us feel the same way. We are so excited that you're representing Lacey Township on the ice. Stay safe, because I watch those games. And, oh, I don't, as a mom, I'm a little frightened. As a superintendent, I'm a little frightened. But it's awesome. We're so glad that you're here. And keep up the great work and keep following your dreams. Congratulations to you.
You look sharp.
And thank you. You look awesome. Thank you for coming out. Thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to go on my car.
Now we will take a short break.
All right. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. But on the trip, maybe.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks.
Good luck, guys.
I'll be back. See you soon. Winter holiday.
Yep, I know. I see you. Lovely, sweetie. Whoever comes. Winter holiday.
Friday, we're winding, is it brick or winding room?
I'll bring Maggie in.
What time?
I'll see you Friday. Take care.
Thank you so much.
Nice job, Coach. Thank you. All right. It's good stuff. Good stuff.
Yes.
Older brother.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Can you see how excited we get when students come and we don't, and they surprise us? It's very, very exciting for us. Very exciting. A lot more exciting than what we're going to do next, which is committee reports. And the only committee report we have for you at this time is the Policy Committee. I chair the Policy Committee, and the committee also consists of Ms. DeSenza, Mrs. DeSenza and Mr. Bidwell. They were both in attendance with Dr. Brower, and we had our meeting on January 12th at 6:00 p.m. I'd like to briefly share the minutes with you. We discussed if we had any specific policy in regard to coach conduct. It's brought to our attention, not only do our own policies, which apply to all staff, would apply to them, but also further, they're guided by NJSAAA regulations and practices. And we also discussed two specific policies, the pupil fundraising and special interest groups. And we discussed the accountability of student fundraising, the purpose, the need. And Dr. Brower is going to provide a review and some more information at our next meeting. We also discussed in great detail the management of life-threatening allergies. We talked about the concerns on parents, that parents had brought to our attention in regard to peanut butter and nut allergies. We had a very lengthy discussion, a petition, and all supporting documents were provided to the new committee. And we are continuing to look at alternatives and what would be the best moving forward for our district. So it will continue under review. We also discussed how we will move forward in reviewing our policies. And we talked about the need for, when we have very intricate policies, such as the random drug testing policy, that we, at that time, would ask for a specific review by our own board attorney for those complicated policies. We discussed the random drug testing. We are at about the one-year mark. And so the superintendent shared the current progress, and she will provide a summary of the program at our next meeting. We also discussed travel expenses for board members, as granted under our policy 0147. The committee decided that they were in support of New Jersey School Boards' training. We are a member of New Jersey School Boards, and as a member, our training comes to us at a discounted rate. Further, under state accountability regs, school board members are required to take certain training annually, and that was discussed. And further, we set dates for moving forward for our next three committee meetings. And that is it for the Policy Committee. Does anybody else have a committee report?
I do not believe so. That was next week.
Curriculum.
Right.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to open the floor to residents of the community. So please just raise your hand if you'd like to speak, so I can call upon you. Come down and state your name and your address for the record. Come on down.
Hi, I'm Heather Hicks. I was here in December to speak about edgenuity. I'm a little disappointed that the students aren't here. I'd be interested to see what some of them might have said, hearing what I have to say. But I want to first explain that, why I feel like this is important. I have two sons. My oldest is a senior. He's graduating. He's on his way. My younger son is a freshman, and to be honest with you, even though he's the one that kind of spurred this on, he is the kind of kid that, he will be fine. But I feel like what happens with edgenuity really could set a precedence for the direction that our school is going with technology and blended learning and that kind of thing. So that's why, and a couple more things came up I do appreciate, and I know that you are all looking into this. I know that there is a meeting coming up with a representative that can go into that. And so some different issues that I didn't mention last time came up, and I just feel like everybody should be aware of them, and this is the easiest way to let everybody know. So anyway, I received a text the other day from a freshman that happens to be friends with my son, they're classmates as well. And she was very upset about a test that they had. So here raises another issue, and I'm going to explain to you why the test was invalid that they took for this class, which was a graded test. And she actually wrote a little write-up, which I thought that was great that she did. I'm going to read it kind of anonymously, so I'll take a few things out. But she starts, "I'm a freshman here at Lacey Township High School. My teacher uses edgenuity on a daily basis. Since the beginning of the year, the majority of my education from this class has come from this site. Since September, I have been using this program, and my loathe for it grows each day. I recently took a test through the website. During this test, we were allowed to use the notes we had taken during the lessons." Don't forget, those notes had to be on paper, because if you typed them into the program, they disappear, so you can't go back to them. Continuing with her note, it says, "I used my notes and received a 56. The questions hardly had information touched upon throughout the lessons. Others in my class had also received low grades due to this issue. Being someone who uses edgenuity daily, I can personally say that it is not helping me further my education. I'm not learning anything from using this program, and don't feel like it should be used if the students aren't learning from it. My fellow classmates have also expressed the same feeling. I know it may look good for the future, but coming from someone who uses it, I am not benefiting from edgenuity, and it isn't helping me in the present." I spoke with another student who also took the same test. I happen to be friends with her mother. And what happened was, students took the test, they could use their notes from the lessons. Almost all of them failed miserably. They were allowed to then go back and try to correct for partial credit. What they ended up doing was using their phones to look up from alternate sources the information they needed. Now, some of these students, the student that I spoke with her mother and the student that wrote this, are high achievers. They are the type of student that really will stop, you know, take notes throughout the entire lesson, things like that. So here are high-achieving, hard-working students who are taking a test based on lessons that they have been taking through edgenuity, failing, and then having to find the information from a totally separate resource. So that is an invalid test. You know, that is completely invalid. It's not assessing what they learned. So there's another issue that came up. I also wanted to mention, it was brought up, that there's a possibility, Mr. Henshaw told me, there's the possibility that if we do have edgenuity, we could farm it out, so to speak, for homebound students to other districts, and perhaps maybe we could recoup some of the money. I just want to really, I sincerely hope that we don't put something like that ahead of the quality of a program that we're using. I want to mention that although it is said to be core-aligned, what I observed from my son's lessons, I have to tell you that I did not personally watch any of the English or math lessons. My son does not have it for that program. But, you know, the Common Core is supposed to be cross-curricular. Everything should be connected. It's deep reading in the content areas and connecting those concepts. So when I looked at his science lesson, I did not see anything like that. There was no reading. And it was not requiring him to use Core standards. It might have asked a couple of questions that were slightly based on the wording and the vocabulary of Common Core, but I assure you, it will not prepare them for PARC. If you have taken any of the practice PARC tests, and I really, really do hope you have, if you haven't, you need to do that, it is nothing like an edgenuity lesson. There is nothing, even remotely, at least not from the science class, but it is nothing like it at all. So right there, I have issues. Is it really what they're claiming it to be? I also want to bring up that many of the things that can be used for blended learning and for station learning and technology are free. TED Ed, if you've never seen a TED Talk, they're fantastic. I mean, you can watch a five-minute TED Talk and learn something that will just change you. a five-minute TED Talk and learn something that will just change the way you think about something. TED Ed has over 100,000 free lessons. You can create lessons. You can take their lessons and you can modify them to your needs. It has a dashboard to keep track of student learning. And did I mention, oh, it's free? And they're dynamic speakers. They're not a teacher sitting at a desk with a split screen of a boring PowerPoint. Our live teachers are capable of doing better work than what I observed from the edgenuity teachers. Our live, real teachers can create wonderful PowerPoints. They can use online resources and they can do a much better job. Khan Academy also, over 100,000 free lessons. There are a multitude of free resources out there that you can use for blended learning, that you can use as a teacher to infuse technology. They have interactive activities on these sites where, you know, it's more exciting, more interesting, and will get the students more engaged in the learning. It's more on par with what they're used to. Our students are sophisticated. They're not going to just, I mean, you have to think about what they do in their real life. I gave my son a hug last night, say goodnight, and he had, you know, these teenagers walk around with the earbuds all the time, right? They always have the earbuds in and you're like, what kind of music are you listening to? So he gives me a hug and I hear talking. He says, you know, what are you listening to? He was listening to a podcast. And I don't know if you've ever heard of Gray Explains. They're fantastic. They're very, very intellectual, educational. So Gray, CGP Gray and Brady Hiran, who also does similar types of YouTube videos, have come together and they do these podcasts. And they're academic in nature and they're interesting and they're engaging. And here is, you know, an almost 15-year-old listening to this just for enjoyment, they're looking for something more than a guy sitting at a desk with a PowerPoint. So we need to give that to them to get them to be engaged. Okay, the last thing that I really want to touch on is to explain to you why parents don't speak up. And this isn't just about edgenuity. This is just in general. You know, it's hard, first of all, to come up here and speak, right? I don't really care, so it doesn't bother me. But most people would not want to be up in this position. That's the first thing. The second thing is, you know, their kids don't want them to say anything. I was going to call the school about something and my son called me a helicopter parent. You know, he's like, "Don't you dare. Don't call them and say anything." All right, so now you have your child. You don't want to speak. Your child doesn't want you to speak. You know, and then there's the issue of privacy. You don't, your child's education may have certain needs and that's not anybody else's business. And so it's difficult to come up and say, it's easy for me. My son is doing okay. You know what I mean? He doesn't have any specific needs in that area. But I have a friend whose son was having a lot of difficulty with edgenuity. He's in a class with a support teacher and, you know, he's got a 504 and he really just, he felt he wasn't learning. His parents felt he wasn't learning. They did meet with the school. They met with the teacher. They met with the counselor. They met with the principal. They dragged the poor kid in and said, "Come on, you know, say what you got to say." He said, "I'm really just, I'm not learning from this."
Is that in Lacy?
Yes. Yes. So this, these very concerned educators, parents, you know, all came together to find a solution. And this is the solution that was come to and this is really important. The solution was that when they're watching the lessons, the support teacher would sit next to this child and go over and try to figure out why he's not, you know, getting it or try to, you know, help this one child. Okay, great. The child's going to get what he needs. However, let's look at it another way, which parents may not think of because they're not an educator, right? Now let's look at the other kids in the class who are also in a class with a support teacher for a reason, who maybe their parents didn't speak up and maybe they need the same type of support. And now, great, I want my friend's son to get the support he needs. However, this is no solution. This is a little Band-Aid on the situation, okay? So, you know, is that a real solution? I don't know. I mean, I don't think it is. This friend of mine also said she expressed that she does not want her son to be in a class with edgenuity next year. Well, are we as parents going to have that option? I don't know because if we're leaving, if we're going to choose a poor-quality program such as this and then leave it to teachers, which I'm a teacher, I'm all for teachers being allowed the freedom to use their skillset the way they want to use it and to try to utilize all their resources. But then do we as parents or do the students have a choice as to what type of classroom setting they're using, whether it benefits them or not? You know, so that's something that needs to be taken into consideration. And on the last note, I do want to mention why I have not spoken to my son's teacher after I spoke to the principal. I am not here to criticize the teachers. I am not here to criticize my son's teacher, any teacher who volunteered to pilot a program that apparently is very difficult to use. They are giving up their free time. I believe they're giving up lunch, like once a week, to learn how to use this program better. I know they are receiving professional development and things like that on this matter. There are school districts that have had to hire data analysts to go over the data that comes along with this program. So it's a very difficult and involved program to use. Why are we spending our time, efforts and energy on that when we could be developing their skillsets to use the free resources and the real-life resources that are out there, which will be much more beneficial to our students and it will be much more engaging? So those were some additional thoughts that I just wanted to put out there for you. I do sincerely appreciate and I do know you are looking into it. I hope that you could add some of those things to your list. And Mrs. Trelle, thank you for getting back to me and keeping in touch with me on what was going on. I do really appreciate that.
You're welcome and thank you. Thank you for sharing your concerns with us and I know that you wanted to be able to share your thoughts with all the board members and with the public. But we have been in regular contact and all your concerns have not only been shared with central office, but with the curriculum committee and we are looking at all this. We appreciate and we appreciate, your son should appreciate you too for coming here and speaking. So thank you.
He's 15, so.
Thank you. If you could just please state your name and your address?
Yes, I sure may. The first thing I want to ask is can you people in the back hear me? Because the sound system in this room...
Not in front, I can't hear you, so I don't know how they can.
Right. Well, as the sound system in this room that you have is terrible and it needs to be replaced. People come to a meeting like this, they want to be able to hear what's going on. Just a suggestion. My name is Richard Bidnick. Some of you already know who I am. I was very actively involved several years ago, coming to several meetings to discuss things about fiscal policy and education and not only that, also with the town. I do want to make one comment after the lady that just spoke here. Whatever happened to a good old-fashioned education? I mean, I'm an educator myself and I hear these things and I got a great education where I went to school. And they have all these new programs and we see these children today and I don't really see for all the amount of money that we're spending, the type of results like we got when I was in school, which wasn't really all that long ago. Now, I know there's a lot of changes, society changes and such that are going on in our world, but something to think about, you know, maybe some of the stuff that we're doing and the way we used to do things maybe wasn't so bad. So just one of a reflection after a comment that was made. First, I'd like to welcome Mr. Bidwell and Ms. DeSenza in their newly-elected positions. It's great to have new people with new ideas and also who are concerned about the issues of the taxpayers and the students and what's fair and equitable for everyone. Regina was elected with a mandate. She's run many times before and she brought up a lot of issues with this body and former bodies that were somewhat balked at and not really respected. But things have come to light and the public now sees that there are serious problems, particularly dealing with fiscal issues. The solar panel fiasco and the way that has landed up coming out and what the state has reported and the way that it was handled and whether there was really a real contract or not, or whether it was just someone who just signed off on this without all the dots and all the Ts being presented in a positive way. So a very important point for me is that the school board needs to look at things now from the taxpayer's point of view also. We need to be able to give a quality education, but we also need to look and basically balance what we really can do and what we really can afford. And so I want to say, I'm going to say a few things and I never want anyone to take personally what I'm going to say. Because I believe that criticism is the only way that you can strive to be better than what you are. We can, we can all sit around and say, oh, and put ourselves on the back and say, we've done a great job. We're fabulous at what we do. But we all know that there are situations and things that are lacking and it's important for that point to be brought up. I also would like to ask the question is that I'm a former CEO of a big nonprofit. I'm also an educator. How often does this board do a self-evaluation of each and every one of you and all the things that you're doing and whether you're up to snuff on all the policies that the state has put forward? If you understand your three main responsibilities, which are hiring a qualified superintendent to do share responsibilities in overseeing policy? I mean, these are very important things and I know that the School Board Association has a lot of programs, et cetera, where they educate the school board members. Now, I all understand that you're all volunteer and you give your time. You're, you know, you're not being paid for this. But on the other hand, if you're not fully going to engage yourself to a point where you are the ambassador for this institution as a trust, as a board member, trustee, whatever, you should be able to go out to the public and be able to answer questions about a lot of these issues and also be able to take information back and then bring it to your superintendent and the administration. This is what I'm hearing and this is what people aren't happy about, or this is what they are happy about. And this is what we can achieve and this is what people would like us to achieve. These are just really, really important things that are important to me and I know a lot of other people because I've spoken to a lot of people in town. I, I know how people are feeling these days and my heart and concern is strictly with people who are one paycheck away from being out in the street, whose homes are in foreclosure. We have a tremendous number of homes in foreclosure because I walk around all over this town and I see it every day. And be the elderly who don't have a voice. And, you know, it's all great. We can do a lot of things, but we need to remember that every time we spend a dollar, we're taking money from these people who have to make a decision about, can I buy the food? Can I buy my medicine? Can I pay my rent? These are very important issues and I want all of you to remember all of those things because right now you're going to be starting the contract negotiations and you need to think outside of the box. Very, very important. So, and that's one of the first things I'm going to bring up, about the contract negotiations for the teachers. The most glaring big elephant, big white elephant, is the health benefits, which are costing to the amount of $15 million alone, this budget here. This cost has risen so much, almost 100% in less than 10 years, when inflation has been so low. I spoke in front of this body four years ago and I pleaded with you before you did the contract negotiations the last time, to go out to bid on the healthcare benefits. Obviously, no one did anything about it because in the current contract, it was negotiated in that you could not go out to bid for those healthcare benefits. As a taxpayer, I find this somewhat offensive because you are the stewards of all of our money and it's up to you to make the decisions that are going to be able to achieve the best bang for the buck. Now, I brought the same stuff, information up four years ago with the township and they did go out to bid. And for the first two years, they saved us over $2 million. The school can do the same thing. And if you have to keep renegotiating it every year and going out to bid every year, so what? We're dealing with taxpayers' money. It's important that this be done. It is an easy procedure. I know that they used to charge, I think, $2,500 to be able to get the whole roster of everybody who's on and how much they're paying and that type of a thing of just being paid out. I'm not sure if the state is charging that anymore, so you might be able to actually get that for free. The school board must go out to bid, as I said, on the healthcare things. And four years ago, I did speak in front of this body about this. We need to think outside of the box. Number two, the enrollment of the school has sunk from 5,100 down to about 4,425. It's almost a 700-student decrease from what we were a few years ago. But I haven't seen any reductions in any staffing levels. In my opinion, the school board should instruct the school administration to come up with a comprehensive plan that since we have 700 students than we did in the past, how we can achieve the education levels that we have with less. Many people that live in this town have had to make serious decisions and reductions in their households because they just can't afford it. The school also can do that. I'm not sure if our budget is 71 million or 75 million. I've seen two figures. But either way, it's very, very expensive for what we're actually been getting. An immediate cap should be put on place on all school administrators' salaries. The school has not been performing very well. I know there are many reasons for this. But in the business world, if you're not producing results, you do not receive increases. Increases should only be given on an actual result basis, both academic and fiscal. This not only makes logical sense, it's a necessity. We need to hire an in-house lawyer for the school district. I was looking over the legal bills. This last year, we paid out $268,920. That was as of June 30th, 2014. We could hire an in-house lawyer for a lot less than that and you will have this person at your disposal 24/7 and not have to worry about all the rates being charged hourly that we are currently doing. I mean, as a taxpayer, I find it tremendously offensive that we're paying that amount. And the year before, I believe, was over $300,000. So that's a lot of money and it's a lot of money that you're taking from a lot of people who can't really afford it. It's time to return the power back to the voters and allow us to decide and approve the school budget. It is apparent after the recent uncovering of the solar panel fiasco, that the school board has lost faith with the public in its ability to manage its finances. Our taxes keep going up, but the results just aren't there. This is morally unacceptable and for those people who are one paycheck from being out in the street or the elderly who have to make choices every month about what they can't afford and what they can't afford, someone must look out for them. Because each day, that number is increasing. It's immoral for any public body where there are so many homes in foreclosure and people living from paycheck to paycheck to continue out-of-control spending. Every dollar that is spent must be justified. After all, there are three... After all, there are three duties that are paramount to this body, which I've already mentioned. I have seen figures, as I said, between 71 and 75 million dollars for the school board. Can I get an actual answer? What is the actual budget figure for this year? This is a figure you guys should know what the topic.
I haven't given the exact numbers.
I was gonna say, Mr. Bidneck, would it be ea-
This is a public comment.
I was gonna say, it'd be easier if you just finished your comments and then-
You could respond?
Well, it's, it's a comment.
Okay.
It's a public comment. It's not really a question and answer period, but-
All right. And then, my last comment is about fiscal integrity. And how you are accountable to the taxpayers. And rewards should only come with excellence. Without those, you really don't have anything. I thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. I hope you'll take some of my comments into consideration as they're coming from the heart.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I apologize. Thank you. If you could please state your name and your address, I'd appreciate it.
My name is Mary Moise. I live on Brookdale Drive in Pheasant Run. This is my second board meeting in my entire life. I'm here to learn. Last time when I came, I couldn't hear. I thought this time I would be able to. It's a little better. Some people are speaking up louder. I was sure there would be a microphone here. Another mistake. This is a problem.
I believe there's a microphone. It's the middle.
It's right on top. Right on top.
Oh, is that what it is? Okay.
Green light.
Now, the other reason I'm here to attend board meetings, I'm, as a citizen and a patriot and a lover of the Constitution and the United States, I'm particularly interested in Common Core. I, I don't know our school's position. I'm here to learn. Okay? And thank you very much.
Thank you. And again, I encourage you to come out with any of your friends to the meeting that we're going to have. It's for parents and public.
Oh, I intend to be there. But guess what? I could hardly hear time and place.
February 18th at 6:30. And we can talk after. I'll provide you the information. Thank you. If you could please state your name and address.
Certainly. Dominic Biava, Sale Drive, Forkham Beach, Sunrise Beach area.
Thank you.
Just have a couple of comments. I have from the last meeting, a comment about the sound. I've probably heard enough of it tonight. Hopefully, we can improve it. My other comment about last time's meeting is that there was only one vote cast for a group of unrelated issues. And that doesn't sound right to me as far as parliamentary procedures go. I would have thought a separate vote for each one would have been more direct. But it also means, it sends a signal to the, the audience that the vote really didn't matter. Because you obviously discussed all of this and decided the issue beforehand.
And, I'm sorry, I just want to just clarify an issue. This is the public agenda. This is not discussed in private session. So it's provided as it is to the public. And the only re, it, the way it's organized is based on different categories. So we can discuss that further. But thank you. I just wanted to clarify that this is not discussed in private session.
No, I, I understand. But, but during the meeting that I attended, there was, I think, five, five different issues that was grouped into just one vote. And, and I think, I think an individual vote should have been applied to each, each issue. If they were related, I can understand that. But they weren't. They were unrelated.
Was this at the reorganization meeting?
Yes. Uh huh. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Right. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm new here. I hadn't attended any.
That's okay. We're just trying to figure out which meeting.
And I was having trouble hearing too, so I apologize.
Okay. Well, I'm older than you, so my hearing is even worse. I have a couple of comments to make about this evening's meeting. I'm encouraged to see that competitive bids are being used for the school buses. And I hope this is indicative that competitive bids will also be requested for more expensive services, such as healthcare, capital projects. And although competitive bidding requires a lot more effort and planning by, by the team, the rewards, it's pretty well defined that in the future, you can get reduced costs and, and it's well worth the effort. I'm also pleased to obtain the advanced gen, agenda of tonight's meeting. It prepared me to understand some of the great detail and many issues that we face every month. And may I suggest that the agenda availability information be provided on the list of meeting dates that are displayed in the local post offices. And would you consider asking the local ShopRite people if this information could be provided on the bulletin board that's in the foyer of the local ShopRite? I think if this information was available, we might get a better turnout of people. So I, I'd like to see a much better attendance than, than I see even tonight. It's more than we had the other day. And one last request I have. I've reviewed your Board of Education organization chart. And I'm really amazed how today's education requirements have changed the administrative needs and careers of people. I would like to obtain the job descriptions for some of these positions. And I have completed a request for public records identifying the interest positions. And I now present this to the board along with the copy of my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comments.
Good evening. Roger Lang, Sunrise Beach. This is my first board meeting, so don't know why I've waited so long. These look like fun things. As a business manager for more than 40 years, you always have a lot of challenges. And whenever my boss called me in for a visit, he'd say, Roger, how have you improved operations and reduced cost? And I always had to have real crisp answers for him. So, different people have made some really good suggestions here tonight, which I support. But I was wondering if you could add an official agenda item to every meeting? And that item would be, how many dollars have we saved this month? I mean, you've got a pretty robust budget, quick snapshot, hundreds of items. So wouldn't it be interesting to say, every board member said, oh man, I, you know, I figured out how to save $5,000 this month. Great. Add it to the list? You might even give them 10% of that as a, as a thank you. Whatever. But the comments about the Lacey taxpayers, I'm going to leave you with this one thought. They're the cash cow and we're running out of milk. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else like the comment? Am I missing anyone? I don't see any other hands. Close public comment. Board comments. Mr. Bidwell.
Thank you, President Thoreau. Just briefly, I'd like to congratulate Gabrielle, John, and Hannah. Great accomplishments, student of the month, full students of the month, as well as the unsung hero. Thank Bailey for standing in for Paul this month. And great job by that wonderful girl, Mackenzie, giving an update on what's going on in the high school. But I think we should also take a moment and thank the parents of these children. It's hard work for somebody like Heather to get up here and talk frankly about her son and her son's experiences in school. And also, we should be thanking Hannah's parents, Gabrielle's parents, and John's parents for the hard work that they do at home, allowing and creating an environment for their students to succeed, as well as they have. So I think we owe them an appreciation as well. Lot of great things going on in the high school and in the other schools this time of year. One thing specific I'd like to mention, Chris Iapico, who is a varsity basketball athlete, is eight points, after tonight's game, he's eight points away from achieving 1,000 points for his high school career, which is a very significant accomplishment. The next basketball game will be this coming Thursday. It's a home game. And anybody that can come out and support, I think it's going to be a pretty exciting game and a great opportunity to celebrate one of our student athletes. And that's all I have.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Downing?
Okay. I too would like to congratulate Gabriella for being the unsung hero. That, to me, is such an honor to receive that award because you're not looking to be the center of attention. You're always there. You're always behind the scenes doing things. And so I'd like to really congratulate her. And Hannah and John for being students of the month. Great students. I, I love listening to the write-ups on these students. And John, being an EMT already, I'm sure he'll, I'm hoping he'll take care of me someday when I'm in the hospital. It's always good to have a, you know, familiar faces, but wish them lots of luck. The Common Core, that's, that's a hot issue around the nation. And so I hope you can come out. This speaker, I heard him speak once and he was very good, so I'm, I'm looking forward to that night as well. The hockey team, what a great surprise that was. I didn't know they were coming tonight. And to see them all in their uniforms and ready to go, it, it's a great, I'm glad they came. So congratulations to them. Mrs. DeWitt, teacher that rocks. That's quite an honor. I've attended those award ceremonies. And it's a real honor to be chosen to be the teacher that rocks. Red Night Out, February 11th, very important night. I hope you can make it. We want to congratulate all the new National Honor Society members. We had quite a few. I forget how many were over 100? Or 80 or 70?
70 was indicated in the note.
They were, it was a wonderful night, always a wonderful night to see so many talented students. Let's see if I got everything. I want the December activities kept us really busy. And I look forward to the upcoming concerts. I also want to congratulate Mrs. Van Sant. She has before won the Ocean First Foundation grants in the past, and she's still trying to get the money for her school. And she did a great job. The Wind Trucks, what a wonderful donation that was. So thank you very much. And I think that's it. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Giordano?
Oh, good. I thought you were going in order and I was getting scared of being-
We just like to mix it up a little.
Being that redundant one and having to say things that everybody already said. So, I, I'm gonna, usually I start out with thanking the students and I'll start out that way. Congratulations to Hannah, John, and Gabrielle for a job well done representing your fellow students as well as the community at large. And giving back to your community. I think that's such a great thing to do when you're in school. I think, I believe what resonated most with me tonight is the fact that there's actually more people in the audience for this meeting. And I've said it from day one, you have to come out and you have to be involved. So everybody that's gotten up and has spoken tonight, we appreciate you coming out. A lot of great ideas. And I'll start with Heather. You know, in regards to the Common Core, I think it was mentioned, it's not easy to get up here. But I believe that parents need to take a very proactive approach in their child's education. They need to be involved. They need to come to these meetings. You need to go to things like the park assessment testing seminar that we're going to have. You need to come to Red Night Out to understand what's going on in this town, in this community, in the state where drugs are concerned. Yeah, you have to be involved. And it, it's one thing sitting there and watching it on television, but it's a different thing when you can come and sit in this audience and get up there and speak. And if that's not easy for you, any board member that sits up here, myself included, you have our phone numbers, you have our email addresses, reach out to us. Because I'd be happy to hear your comments. I'd be happy to hear how you feel about the quality of the product that we put out here. You know, I think we do a good job. Can we do a better job? Everybody can always do a better job. In regards to, let's see, I'm going to jump around. You know, Mr. Bidneck, thank you. You know, you, you brought up some interesting points. One thing I will say is, and I think a couple of people touched on this. When it, when it comes to the solar panels, there's four new board members that are up here. Okay? There's a couple of board members that weren't sitting on this board when some of those decisions were made. And I'm not saying anybody did anything right or did anything wrong. But, you know, we as a board, myself, I'll say this, when it comes to fiscal responsibility, you know, having had experience in a publicly traded company managing a budget, take fiscal responsibility very seriously. And, you know, I appreciate you coming out tonight and bringing up those points. And I can assure you that this board takes a hard look at some of these things, all of these things, when considerations go into budgets and whatnot. So thank you for that. Comments about the Common Core? Mary Moise, thank you very much for coming up here. You know, this is a, education today is different than it was five years ago, 10 years ago, 25 years ago when I went to school here. I can tell you that in the corporate environment, when you have to learn about codes of ethics and how, you know, legal ways to do business, the right way to do business, things you can do, things you can't do, it's all done via computer. It's all done from sitting behind a screen and taking a test online and listening to a speaker speak. Let me get back to what Heather was saying. I go around town when I see students, when I see them working at the stores in the community and whatnot, and I ask them. I said, I'll ask kids that have graduated, did you feel high school prepared you for college? By and large, I, I get, I get positive answers. Are they all great? No. But by and large, I get positive answers. I asked them about Common Core and about ingenuity and, and the blended learning. And yeah, there's, there's some challenges. But it's a pilot program. And, you know, we're taking a look at it. I know this is something that this board takes very seriously. I know being on the curriculum committee, we take it very seriously. But I just, I, I don't want to see one person come out. And I, I thank you for doing that. Get more people to come out. These surveys that are going out for students, parents, teachers alike, I hope there's an overwhelming response so we can all hear what's really going on. Because that's the only way that we're going to impact change. I don't want to ramble on, but the hockey team, it was nice to see. And the one thing I'll say about that is, two years ago, we didn't have a hockey team. And these kids came out here and they petitioned. They wanted it. They came out with their parents. They were passionate about it. They presented to this board numerous times, to this administration numerous times. And they got, you know, they, they got a team. And now here they are. And what a fine bunch of individuals that were here tonight. It was awesome to see them. You know, that's, I'll, I'll end it with that. I just really want the public to come, oh, Red Night Out. Red Night Out, please come out to that. Very, very important. You know, last year, we had some really engaging speakers. There were some real heartfelt dialogues, some, some, some pretty engaging presentations. Please come out to that this year. Very, very important. But just going back to the parents and everybody in this community, please be engaged in your kids' education. Please reach out to us. Yeah, we were elected here to serve you guys. If you're not engaging with us, you know, I just, I would encourage you to do so. And that concludes my comments. President Thoreau, thank you.
Thank you very much. Mrs. McAvoy?
Hi. And I don't want to reiterate on everything that Mr. Giordano said, but thank you, Mrs. Hicks. You taught me a lot tonight. I, as board member, don't know about ingenuity, which I should. That's my problem. But now I want to learn about it. And I understand as a fellow teacher, as a fellow mother, how hard it is to get up here and talk. And you are definitely passionate about it. You could tell. So I respect you for coming out. And I'm hoping to come in and observe some ingenuity blended learning lessons. Because I'm serving on the curriculum committee now. So this will be foremost. And it's going to get my interests going. So thank you for coming out. And thank you to everyone else for coming out to talk. Like Mr. Giordano said, this is the most people we've seen in the year that we've been on the board. So it is good to have the community involved. So thank you for that. I, my ongoing spotlight- My ongoing spotlight on graduates, I have two again tonight. Erin Hopson graduated from the high school in 2009, she went to Stevens, she recently received her master's in coastal engineering, which is a great accomplishment. And Rob Bender, I ran into him at the gym the other day, even though you could not tell that I go to a gym, but Rob Bender is a graduate of Lacy Township High School in 2009. He's an active military right now, he's an E-4 in the Coast Guard stationed in Chrisfield, Maryland. So I want to thank Rob and all the other military people that have graduated from Lacy Township. I missed December's meeting, and I never got to thank Mr. Carney and Mr. Martinak for all their service, I know everybody else did, but I personally want to thank the two of them. And personally, I want to thank everybody, I've received so many cards and messages from staff members that I don't even know, from administrators and the board for the passing of my father a few weeks ago. So thank you to everybody that reached out to me. And talking about fiscal responsibility, I'd like to ask the board if we could kind of go digital, getting big packets every week, every month, maybe we could look into saving money on paper and have laptops or iPads or something to come to this generation and save some paper. Congratulations to all the students of the month, I'm proud of all your accomplishments. Mr. Bidnick and Mrs. DeSenza and others, the self-assessment for the board, I didn't know anything about it, so I did do a lot of research on the board's self-assessment. That is something I'm very interested in. If the public doesn't know what it is, I researched it. It's something provided by the New Jersey School Boards, for Board of Education's to, it holds the board accountable to themselves, the staff and the community, by doing a self-assessment of the board. It fosters open communication, allows for reflection by board members of our individual and collective behaviors and performances, how we serve the community. So I'm hoping that's something that the board can look into, and we could do a self-assessment and provide the results to the public. And lastly, the random drug testing that has been brought up to the public, this is our second year, we're going into it the second year. I know the results were not publicized for the first year, but going forward, I'm hoping that we can. Mr. Torella, you said that Dr. Brower, did you mean it's going to come to the policy committee, or did you mean it's going to come to the public? When you talked about your policy committee?
It is going, there were further information when we come back to the policy committee.
Okay, are we going to let the public know about the random drug results?
Not at this time, and if, would you like to speak to that?
No, not at this time.
Okay, I'm hoping as a board member that we can.
Almost, but not at this time.
Okay, I'm hoping that we can.
Just to clarify.
Eventually.
Just to clarify, because it's actually, the results we have are under a year.
We're still looking at baseline data, we provided this information to the board, either in notes or in committee minutes, but right now, it would not be prudent to release that data, because the public wouldn't be able to make meaning of it just yet. So that's why in the future years, it's something that we can absolutely talk about, but right now, not yet.
Okay, so hopefully, in the future, we can let the public know the results of the random drug testing. That's all for tonight, thank you, President Torella.
Thank you. And Mrs. DeSenza?
Thank you, Board President, Ms. Torella. Good evening, everyone, and congratulations to the seniors of the month, Hannah Lemke and John Rice. Hannah starred in Stained Glass, the play was a wonderful show, and I'm glad I had the opportunity to see it. And congratulations to Gabriella as well. I am always impressed with the achievements and ambition demonstrated by these hard-working, stellar students. May your ambition and tenacity stay with you for life and ensure your future success. It has been a whirlwind two weeks as a new board member since the reorganization meeting and swearing-in on January 5th. We attended the NHS induction ceremony on January 8th. It was very solemn and special to all the inductees and their families. Then the weekend of January 9th, I completed the NJ SBA mandatory training course in Princeton, Governance 1, for first-time board members. I would also like to thank Dr. Brower for setting up a new board member orientation before the reorganization meeting, January 5th. Rookie board members have a lot to learn. While I have been attending board meetings for over 11 years, the view is very different from this side of the table. Many important topics were discussed at the very intense governance training weekend, and for the public's information, this mandated training costs the district nothing, it is paid for by a nonprofit foundation called ELF, the Educational Learning Foundation. The most significant session for me during the governance weekend was the labor relations presentation. A lot of valuable suggestions were made by the NJ SBA personnel, and now, since I'm on the negotiations committee, a lot of this information will be useful. Everyone knows it's budget and contract time, I do hope the negotiations go smoothly. These are hard economic times for many, and this board must be mindful of the financial difficulties faced by all the residents of Lacy. I thank the public for all their comments tonight. While I'm not on the curriculum committee, I would like to get more information on the program discussed here tonight. Last week, on Thursday, I attended Playing It Clean at the Pine Belt Arena sponsored by the Ocean County Prosecutor's Office. The speakers and panelists had amazing stories to tell of how they had to fight to beat addiction to painkillers after injuries. I believe Playing It Clean can be viewed on Channel 21 or YouTube, it was videotaped. This past Saturday, I also visited the Fisherman's Flea Market at the high school, it was a huge success with over 600 people attending. As some people may have noticed, I did not vote for the bills in their entirety tonight. There were 246 items. I refrained from the coach closing checks, and it's not that I don't want to provide the coaches with uniforms, but I think they can be ordered cheaper with the team order. It is not necessary to give $150 cash. The other item I voted no on was the solar bond debt payment of $1,152,287.50. Everyone recalls the New Jersey State Comptroller's alert released in March of 2014. Fiscal prudence must be this board's utmost responsibility. The public deserves honesty and transparency, and the students deserve all we can give them with our available resources to ensure their future success. Some very tough financial decisions lie ahead in 2015. It is my desire to stabilize the tax levy this year, and it is my hope my fellow board members will all share this goal. Tonight, I'm wearing red as a symbol to my personal commitments for raising and educating a drug-free community. Red Ribbon Week should be every day, not just once a year. The Red Night Out presentation, February 11th, at Lacy High School. Please come. I urge all taxpayers to please come to the Board of Education meetings. The next business meeting will be held also on a Tuesday, February 17th, at 7:30 PM. Please bring your concerns here. If you do not wish to be on camera, you can speak to any one of us before or after a meeting. This is your town, your school district, your Board of Education paid for with your taxes. And like Martin Luther King, I have a dream. I have a dream for fair and equitable taxes and a school district that can someday be number one. Together, we can all make it happen. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Schubiger?
Thank you, excuse me, President Torella. Just a couple of points tonight. Thank you all for coming out and speaking, appreciate the comments, always good to hear from the community. One, I want to talk about success in general. The students here tonight, who were honored, certainly represent a larger group who are excelling and succeeding in our district. I think they're, there's great illustrations of the fact that you can be a student in Lacy Township and not only succeed, but do great things after you leave here. So keep up the good work, you have all of our support, of course. Number two, responsiveness. I think this board has shown throughout the years that I've been on, at least, and I'm pretty sure before then as well, that we do respond to public inquiries and concerns that either staff or the public have of either the board in particular, or our program, or anything going on within the district. The blended learning issue, I know, is really something that has a lot of discussion right now, and I was happy to hear, because I did make a comment at the last meeting, that the administration should take this seriously, as I knew they would, to start looking at it and to figure out if there's something we need to do now, in a month, in a year, whatever it's gonna take, to make sure that our school population and our parent population and the whole community feels more comfortable with it. So, that's number two. Number three, alternative revenue streams, I wanted to talk about. I think tonight, Dr. Clark shared with us the Perfect Harmony Grant Award of, I think it was just under $9,000, $8,955.23, I believe. Regardless of the amount, I think it's another example of the fact that our staff at every level and all the way through the administration and this board are continuing to seek alternative means of revenue to help offset the tax burden on our residents. So, in this case, it may not sound like a lot, but I know there's many times that this board has supported and been here when grants and checks were issued to us because of the hard work of some of our staff. And certainly, we've traditionally shown that while many local governing bodies sit on their hands and let the tax burden fall directly on the residents, we continue to show that no matter what it takes, we're gonna look at everything to come up with other means so that that burden does not fall on the taxpayer. So, lastly, I want to talk about, it was mentioned about the changing face of education. I don't think those are the exact words that were used, but the idea was, what's happened to education all of a sudden? It seems like it's so much, and all this kind of stuff that it takes to educate a child. And I absolutely agree, I kind of come from the school of thought that a good teacher and a good book and some support at home really makes a good student. But unfortunately, that's pretty interesting, sorry. Unfortunately, local school districts are taxed, no pun intended, with the burden of meeting state and federal mandates that are really kind of absurd. A lot of the expenses you see, both the hardware and the programs that are implemented here, whether we think they're great or not, are things that we are required to implement, which costs money. So, I'd like, maybe some of us can all join together and go down to the State House one day too, and find out what's going down on their end. Not all their fault, the issues that we're dealing with are certainly a lot of people involved, but I think I've spoken several times about unfunded state mandates that we're left to deal with here, and we try to do the best we can. And then how you kind of deal with the budget and sort of the ills of a local community's economics. Since 2007, for example, there's been a myriad of issues that have sort of come together that cause what we have in the state of New Jersey. And I've spoken to them before, but I'll just kind of summarize. When the state aid is either flat or reduced to local districts, when the state of New Jersey steals the energy tax receipts from local municipalities, money that is by statute designed to provide tax relief to local municipalities, and they take it for their pet projects at the state level, that's millions of dollars, not $10, not $100, millions of dollars that come back and that we're left to deal with at the local level. When the actual valuation of our towns continues to go down, which it is continuing to go down, not just Lacy but all around us, that hurts, because it represents something that we have to make up for to provide the same services. And finally, all that's going on, all those things that I just mentioned, yet the state's asking us to do more with less. And it's something that we have to do, and we're up for it, we do the best we can. But I just want to caution people from feeling that it's just, we just want to spend more money and it's something that we feel like we just want to throw it all on the taxpayer. I think if we look around, this school district here, I would put us up against almost any other local governing body in the area as far as the percent increase of the tax levy on our taxpayer is, I think, pretty low compared to many others. And I know for a fact that it's the lowest increase within our township. So, please, we're working as best we can, we have work to do, we gotta do better, I agree with everybody here tonight, we can't just rest on our laurels. But it's a pretty complex picture and sort of pie chart that's hard to follow, and I hope everybody just keeps that in mind. So with that, I want to turn it back to you, thank you very much, and thanks again for coming out and sharing your views, thank you.
Thank you, Vice President Schubiger. Yes, I want to thank everybody who's here tonight, and we appreciate the public comments. Sometimes there's things that, you know, we hear year after year, but it's good refresher. Other times, it's brand-new information that is important to us to be able to bring back to our administrators, to talk amongst the board. I believe I've discussed this numerous times, but just to remind everybody, this is not the only time we meet, we have three standing committees that tackle many issues, and all of us board members serve on those. We also are delegates to the NJSA, or I should say, the NJ SBA, which is the School Board Association. We have a delegate and an alternate to the county-level delegate, they give us many opportunities for training. On top of the fact that we have an exciting new committee, which is the Strategic Planning Committee, and Mr. Giordano has graciously offered to chair that committee. Mrs. Downing's on that committee, and Mr. Schubiger's on that committee, they are meeting tomorrow. You heard us discuss, I believe, in the November meeting about strategic planning, it's been discussed before. That's another opportunity the public will have to come out and be involved in what is the strategic plan for the district. So you'll be hearing much more about that and how the public can be involved in those sessions moving forward. Those will be much more like working groups, so you'll actively be able to participate. So I look forward to your continued involvement. You've heard so many comments tonight, so briefly, I just want to congratulate again Hannah and John Senior of the Month and Gabrielle for unsung hero, and it was wonderful to see the hockey team. With that, I'd like to turn to new business. And in regard to new business, that's on page 281 through 282, it's items A through G. A being the budget transfers, B, the use of facilities, which means that when people are coming to use our facilities, we have to vote on that. C, the joint transportation agreement, D, the bus bids, E, the Board Secretary/Treasurer of School monies report, which is attached, F, the added district placements, and G, the curriculum approval, and that's the QZAC requirement. So I'm asking for a motion to move A through G. Move?
Second.
Roll call?
Mr. Bidnick?
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza?
Yes, but I abstain on item A, budget transfers, just got the budget at 6 o'clock, I need some time to read it, thank you.
Mr. Giordano?
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy?
Yes, I have a question, a discussion. G, curriculum approval, is edgenuity in that curriculum?
It's listed, right under the motion?
No. So, edgenuity is not part of that?
No.
Okay, I vote yes.
Mrs. Downing?
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger?
Yes.
Mrs. Torella?
Yes, thank you. A, donations. First is art supplies that are provided by Monica Kuhn to Forkett River School in the value of $200. Two mini iPad, mini iPads, I guess, that's what that would be, and that's from Donors Choice Org, and that went to Forkett River School in the amount of $502.56. Two iPad mini cases, also by Donors Choice Org to Forkett River School in the value of $49.80, I mean $98. One donation check, and that is from, again, another organization, we thank them. Ocean County Historical Society, Tulon, Oka Harbor, in the amount of 600. The Winthropes Foundation to Mill Pond Grant, which we discussed significantly tonight, in the amount of $8,955.83. Donation to a Cedar Creek Family, anonymous donor, to $400. Another donation to another Cedar Creek family.
Another donation to another Cedar Creek family in the amount of $350, also anonymous. One holiday staff breakfast from Thompson Healthcare and Sports Medicine to Cedar Creek in the amount of $200. And paintbrushes and assorted plastic bottles for art classes from Home Depot of Lacey, middle school, $30. I want, on behalf of the board, to thank all these donors. It's a great collection of individuals, organizations, and nonprofit organizations. So I thank them, and I'm asking for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Absolutely, yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes, and thank you.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes, and just quickly, just a special thanks to the Windtrope Family Foundation for the Perfect Harmony Program, as I alluded to before. I don't think I actually mentioned the foundation, so I apologize. Thank you.
Mrs. Terrell. Yes, and thank you. In regard to the next item, programs and curriculum, A, do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second. Roll call.
Mrs., Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. On the next page, number four, professional days and workshops. There's two motions under this part. The first, professional days for staff. Part two is the training costs for school board members. I'd like to add, well, first, let me take, let me take them separate. So may I have a motion to move the approval of professional days for the following staff?
Motion.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Abstain.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. Thank you. Now in regard to the second motion, I ask for a motion to approve the workshops for the following board members. Ms. DeSenza is listed for two separate trainings for a cost of $200 each. Myself is listed for a training at $200, and I'm asking that Ms. Donna McAvoy be added for Board of Ed and under the date for January 24th, 2015. The workshop highlights from the workshop 2014, comma Princeton, no substitute is needed, and a cost of $200. So with that addition, I'm asking for a motion.
Move it.
Any second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Abstain.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Abstain.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
I am voting yes, but abstaining in regard to the training for myself. So I'm voting yes in regard to the trainings for Ms. DeSenza and for Mrs. McAvoy.
Thank you. On page 285, number five, certificated personnel, A through K, replacement positions, position change, co-curriculum, curriculum development, under D, co-curricular resignation, E, retirement, F, military leave of absence, G, leave of absence, H, advanced degree, I, continuing education credits, J, sabbatical leave of absence, K, substitute teacher. Do I have a motion on A through K?
Can I make a motion to table C under volunteers? I just would like to do some fact-finding on it. Spring sports do not start till March 6th, and I noticed that one of the names was listed for another position at the same sport. So I would like to make a motion to table that and bring it back up next meeting, since we do have plenty of time for fact-finding.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
This is the table, the volunteer portion of C.
Right, correct. The volunteer, just the volunteer portion?
Yes.
They're volunteers. We're not paying for them?
That is.
That's the section?
Yes, that is correct. But we need a roll call vote to see if that motion passes.
Okay.
Mr. Bidwell.
No.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
No.
Mr. Schubiger.
No.
Mrs. Terrell.
No.
So in regard to A and K, do I have a motion to move those items?
Motion.
Second.
A through K, right? Did you say?
A through K. I apologize.
That's all right. No.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Abstain on volunteers, item C. Yes on all others.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes, no on volunteers.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
And I, I would like to say, I just don't understand how one person can want to do two sports at the same time. I just wanted the public to understand where I'm coming from.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes. In regard to item six, it's, and that is the last page, support non-certificated staff personnel, A through C, A, replacement position, B, leave of absence without pay, and C, substitute support staff. Do I have a motion?
Move, please.
Second? I'm asking for a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Mr. Bidwell.
Yes.
Mrs. DeSenza.
Yes.
Mr. Giordano.
Yes.
Mrs. McAvoy.
Yes.
Mrs. Downing.
Yes.
Mr. Schubiger.
Yes.
Mrs. Terrell.
Yes.